City of Castle Hill Zoning Commission meeting on December 4th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Castle Hill City Hall City Council chambers at 209 Lemonwood Drive in Castle Hills, Texas, 78213. That's item number one to call this meeting to order and determine a quorum, and we do have one seated tonight from my right is Commissioners Aiken, Baker, Gray, Flynn, Presiding Officer Isbrand. Item number two, consider approval of the October 23, 2018, and the November 14, 2018 zoning meeting minutes. Members, are there any additions, deletions, comment on this before a motion? Then hearing none will accept a motion. Mr. Gray moves to approve both, and second from Ms. Baker, all in favor. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Item number three, consider the recommendations from the zoning review committee revising Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. The discussions will include home occupations and short-term rentals. Before we begin this, members, I just want to thank those of you who were here at the last minute, those of you who attempt to attend, and my apologies for my inability to attend the last meeting. I appreciate all the work that you all continue to do to move this forward as we take on these items tonight, and we're going to open up a public hearing to go along with this, and the public hearing will open at 7:01 PM. All right. First up, I should note Ms. Thalen, Mr. Rappley are also with us tonight. Ms. Thalen, you want to direct us on which item? Parking lighting? Parking lighting?
I want, we have to hold the mic down. I'm going to swap mics real quick. Thank you for your patience. We'll start with Section 50-36, Requirements Applicable to All Districts. And I know that you took this up in October on the 23rd, and in my absence, there were some questions, and I was not here to assist you, and I will refresh your memory on what the discussions were at that time. The Cooperative Parking Plan, Mr. Schnall and I know Ms. Baker had a long discussion about it, and Ms. Baker feels that it needs to be included. It is routinely discussed in ARC, and we have gotten written plans when we have a new business coming into town, and they're going to make a change, or we're building a structure, and we don't believe that there's going to be adequate parking. And so we have been addressing those through ARC, then they go to council. So if it is not in here, I agree, it was just language that I snatched from someplace else, and if it's not here, it's not the end of the world. I did make the correction, it is 600, not 600, and then 300 in numbers five. So when we get ready for a motion, that kind of summarizes where you were on that one. And then I think there was some concern that we got into the business of maintenance on parking lots with number six, and I think the consensus was to probably remove those. The rest of this information is very helpful. We will use it a lot within the permit office or in development for ARC and for development in plan reviews.
Okay, thank you. So let me open up the discussion here. Does anyone have any further comments or questions from the commission on this item, general parking requirements? Ms. Baker, were all of your questions addressed to your satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Are we good with it? Mr. Flynn, Mr. Aiken, everyone good? All right. So we'll keep moving forward then. We had left, at least according to this notation still, then Section Eight, I'm sorry, Section F, Item Eight, the discussion-
Can I get clarification real quick?
Sure.
Is the intention then for Five and Six to be removed from under E in general parking requirements?
Ms. Baker, I'm giving you time to read this because I know that you initially brought these questions up. Want to make sure that-
Well, I think my preference is that we keep it in because staff turnover may create variances in application, and so my preference would be to put it in.
Okay.
Leave it in.
And I guess I should have asked more clearly. That would be my sentiment as well, but I want to make sure that members, you have the clarity here that so Item Five, number five and six would remain in as it currently reads now. Is that what you all are at this point comfortable with?
Mr. Schnall did recommend that we get, take six out. He was, it was not, and several of the members discussed that six was too heavy-handed. It does give code some enforcement capacity.
So Item Number Six reads, "All parking lots, parking spaces, fire lanes, and pedestrian crosswalks shall be permanently and clearly delineated through the use of striping buttons, tiles, curbs, barriers, or other approved methods. Non-permanent type markings such as paint shall be regularly maintained to ensure continuous clear identification of the space." This may not be a fair question for you to speak for Mr. Schnall, but what's heavy-handed about that? Did he elaborate any?
In the minutes of, when I was listening to the meeting, he was, and one other commissioner, and I don't remember which, kind of commented that that put us in the business of policing parking lots. But it is private property. The fire lanes will remain marked because our firemen, when they go out for inspections, do look for that. So that one for sure, which is truly a health-safety issue. The others, it's a parking lot.
I think it could be argued that pedestrian crosswalks are health-safety too.
They're not enforceable ones, though, just FYI.
Okay, that's true.
I still kind of ask the question, I don't see what the issue is of this being heavy-handed or not appropriate because we're talking about private property here. If there's one thing I would consider just after reading this, it would be perhaps removing the word "permanently," saying that parking lots, parking spaces, fire lanes, pedestrian crosswalks shall be clearly delineated. That, I think, leaves the obligation there without, if we have a concern that this is heavy-handed, but I need to, for you all to tell me how you weigh in on this.
I would agree with that about the permanently. I would strike that.
All right. So what I'm hearing is we would leave then Number Six in here, but striking the words "permanently" and-
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
All right. We'll jump down to the next section, which is G, General Lighting Standards.
I'm sorry, can we go back to, did we, again, I apologize if this was at the last meeting-
I'm sorry, I missed that one. The sheet metal question. When you are using comments in Microsoft Word, it's hard to know where to stick them, so I just chose the very bottom of that section, unfortunately, made it appear to be part of, and I think that the discussion was that for larger lots, we would remain on the variance process and not discuss that as changes to the code, because it was not brought by the zoning committee, review committee, and that the process for variances does work well. It is a little cumbersome sometimes, but it, this was just put in here because there was discussion prior, in the prior meetings, about larger estate lots and having more accessory structures, so it was not in reference to sheet metal, which we are not allowing.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right, ready to move to general lighting then?
Be thinking of lighting in terms of both residential and commercial application. And we do get calls where a neighbor has put in two floodlights, and they are very much in the next-door neighbor's face or the guy across the alley's face, and they've had to plant bushes to try to block them, and they sometimes talk about things like a BB gun. They're very frustrated with it, and this would give us some tools to help manage that, because it could be a commercial business that puts a, and if you will look underneath the packet I handed tonight, there's good and bad lighting. I found this in someone else's ordinance, and it's possible that you have businesses who do this routinely where they put an unshielded light up, and so the language that's in here helps give us some tools. The second thought process on some of this is, if you go out into space and you look, we're really bright. And our military installations are facing issues with dark sky and light encroachment, and that horizontal plane, which Mr. Rappley said he would not demonstrate for you this evening, is defined, and I'm sure that Mr. Gray could have given us the definition. It has to do with light emitting 90 degrees from the base of the light, so that no light is going upwards, that light is designed to go downwards, and that it is directional and shielded. And so that's what that horizontal plane reference is. And people that are in development and in permitting are familiar with that. Our architects are very familiar with that, that's said on our ARC. So having that language in there is important, and like you said, so that anybody who picks this up will know that developers especially are really in tune to this, and it's becoming more and more of an issue with cities.
So is this going to be included in anything, or is this just for our illumination?
That was just for you, for your illumination. Good pun, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, last time we discussed taking out light trespass beyond the boundaries, but now that you've explained it, it's fine. I just didn't really understand what horizontal plane was.
And by having that language in there, when a developer comes in, we've been asking them to provide us a photometric drawing of their light, proposed light, and so they do a light study, and most cities have either a zero tolerance or no more than one candle foot off of the property by like one foot or 10 feet. There's varying things, and so when they bring those into us, ARC typically asks for that as part of, and we recommend it for them to bring it, because we have had many neighbors come to ARC meetings saying, you know, okay, I can live with the fact that I'm getting a zoning change here, or maybe I'm having a new structure built, but don't blind us, don't take away my stars, you know? And so that horizontal plane, if I put a light in that's a pole mount that's meant to illuminate a walkway, that light should not come above the actual light itself. And so those are the kind of thoughts to try, low impact, I mean, low voltage lighting, we don't even get involved with. You want to put low voltage lighting in your trees, and you have it along your walkways. We don't inspect it, they don't have to permit it, nobody's going to get electrocuted from it. So it doesn't, we're not talking about interfering with people's rights to put lighting on their property. This is just a tool when the light is blinding someone, and we have a tool to correct that.
My question about that, though, is when I read Number One here, I don't necessarily interpret it the same way. So I read here that outdoor lighting is designed to provide the minimum, and I underscore myself the word "minimum," lighting to ensure adequate safety, night vision, and comfort, et cetera, et cetera, here, which to me is, I interpret that as that means those low voltage lights in my tree don't meet any of those things. They are neither there for safety, night vision, or comfort. They are there for-
Aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yes ma'am.
Yes. And so you, those would not be impacted by this unless they're so bright and you've put 4,000 of them up and your neighbor's complaining, then we probably would go out and have words with them and maybe take a light meter and try to get someone to assist us with that. But it's not the norm. More of this is for issues for development, and having the tool is helpful.
The 4,000 are only up during the holidays.
And those don't count at all.
They come down.
That's Americana at its finest.
I will tell you that in my front yard, I would be out of compliance with this right this moment, because I have floodlights going up into our oak trees that are uncovered, right? So they're sitting, one's sitting behind a bush, and the other's in front of a tree that points straight up.
And you probably are referring to live oak trees?
I think so, yeah.
They probably don't shed except for that week or two in March, so you're not getting any light trespass just because they're shielded naturally by the tree itself. And the light police are not going to come out. We have enough work to do that we are never going to get in the business of being the light police. This is purely going to be for development, for commercial, and for reactive, for responses to complaints from someone.
What concerns me, Janet, is having a citizen say someone didn't like the lighting I have, and if they look at Paragraph Two, "Outdoor lighting must be hooded, shielded, and/or aimed downward." I'm neither of those three things. And so if you had somebody that wanted to use that against you, the way I read this, they could. I understand what you're saying from a development perspective, but we've had neighbors in the past that liked to read these things. Some of them have passed on to heaven now, and they took great pleasure in reading these things and trying to find fault. So I like to make it so it's non-intrusive on the citizen, and we understand the intent.
Well, I will leave this to you guys to hash out what you want to leave in there or how you would like to mitigate the language to make sure that we do not create unintentional enforcement.
Right.
Or use of the, retaliatory use of the, or aesthetic police use of the ordinance.
Essentially.
Right.
And related to that, I had the same concern again, upward versus downward, when you're talking about accent lighting and the like. But then on Number Four, I was also caught by the words, "When approved, access lighting shall be directed," et cetera, et cetera.
Good point.
So we are now going to have access lighting police who we're going to have to approve.
We could change that to just say "commercial." You could add the word "commercial" in there.
Yeah, I think, I think the intention here is very good. I think looking at it from commercial versus residential, there's some nuance here that we need to work with.
For the downward lighting, you could specify specifically "commercial."
All right, members, do you have, does anyone have any particular comments or before we, or shall we collectively try to parse some of this a little bit? I think Ms. Thalen's suggestion about Number Four of commercial accent, excuse me, commercial accent lighting, replacing "when approved" with rather "commercial accent lighting," shall be directed downward. Is that-
I'm fine with that.
-a bolt to you on? Okay. So then let's go back to-
Yeah, Number Two, I don't know how we rectify that.
And that's intended to be both commercial and residential? Reading Number Two?
Up to you guys. How about we went, we could change outdoor lighting? You could just drop the "and/or aimed downward" and just say, "Outdoor lighting must be hooded or shielded," and in your case, the trees provide the shielding for accent lighting within vegetation, because you're not going to accent light a tree that's deciduous because it's going to look silly in the winter.
Yeah, I appreciate the intent there, but I feel like it's left to great interpretation because if you look at this as an example, it shows you what shielded lighting is, and there's not a picture of a tree hiding anything there.
Can we modify it a little bit, you know, put some clarifiers on there, modifiers, such that, you know, it does not create a nuisance?
Absolutely.
You know?
And I think you do that in Number One. Number One does that.
If his is pointing up in, straight up, it's not shielded, but it's not pointing in somebody's window either.
Right.
So technically-
And that's the intent, I agree with you.
Yeah, so I think if we-
Should we take record? I agree with Mr. Flynn.
Put some kind of nuisance language in there.
I agree with that.
I think that would solve the problem.
Unless it constitutes a nuisance or something like that.
I think you could strike Two completely. One will cover all of your light trespass for excessive glare. Number Four will take care of your commercial issues, and I think Number Three does the exact same thing.
I agree with that.
So I think you could strike Two without having any heartburn whatsoever.
Very good.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yes.
So then jumping back to Number One, again, the word "minimum" bothers me a little bit because-
I marked it out.
Okay.
Very subjective.
Subjective.
Perforless.
And if we're going to define what lighting is for, I feel that lighting is also used aesthetically, that it should be referenced in there as well, to ensure adequate safety, night vision, comfort, and/or aesthetic.
So you want to add aesthetic after comfort?
Or aesthetics.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rappley.
I just know that you need to reference there.
We just leave it out completely.
It's really more the intent is you can put up lighting as long as it doesn't cause excessive glare or is offensive or a nuisance.
Right.
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 I think you cover it.
Okay, so reading that, just especially for you poor folks in the audience who are following us along here. So that would read, "Outdoor lighting shall be designed to provide the lighting necessary to ensure adequate safety, night vision, comfort, or esti, and/or aesthetics."
Perfect.
"And not create or cause excessive glare onto adjacent properties and public street rights of way." Work?
Yep.
And we strike Number Two completely?
Yep.
That references the shielding and directional purpose. Number Three, any other changes there, comments on that?
I think you would need to strike the second sentence because the horizontal plane would get you back into, "I can't aesthetically light my trees," because obviously they're upward. And-
I'm fine with that.
Strike Sentence Two of, so the sentence we would be striking is, "Light trespass beyond property boundaries or above the horizontal plane shall be considered noncompliant."
Perfect.
Perfect.
So what it remains is, "Any bright light shining onto an adjacent property or streets that would result in a safety hazard is not permitted."
You might want to say "safety hazard" or "a nuisance."
Yeah, that's because that's two significantly different things.
Yes, we've got that, thank you.
All right. And then Section Four, we struck "when approved" and replaced it with "commercial." So "Commercial accent lighting shall be directed downward onto the structure or object and not toward the sky or adjacent properties. Direct light emission shall not be visible above the roof line or beyond the building edge." Good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Then we'll jump to General Business District 50-351, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements. And the reason I brought up clinics and made the conversation in here, and probably veterinary clinic for sure does not need to be included in that, they tend to get their patients in and out, and you were right, they do have boarding facility areas. So medical and dental, when we had the buildings built at 6810 and 6812 West Avenue, the architects with ARC, there was a lot of discussion about adequate parking and that the parking numbers that we were using probably were a little bit too low, and that really didn't line up with how doctors' offices are now operating, and that when they were originally written, yeah, your doctor saw a patient every 30 minutes. Now you might have a doctor and a PA, and they're seeing patients every 15 minutes if you're lucky. And so you'd get that backlog. They were the ones that brought it to our attention. Are we, and I know the question at the last meeting about this was, are we experiencing any problems with this to date? Not that I'm aware of. Our only problem child had been with the basis school and some folks parking at the CVS parking lot, and that's all gone, and we should not have any more incidences like that. I think we've, that is historical. So I, we do see a lot of turnover in use in suites throughout the community, and we do, we could have little drop-in clinics that go into a couple of suites that may or may not present a problem. I will leave that entirely up to you, but that was the history on it, that was what precipitated the conversation.
Comments from anyone? You comfortable with that?
Yes.
My only concern, that was actually addressed later on, is whether we were going to be silent on clinics, since it was originally in the code for some purpose, but then I flipped the page, of course, and Item K, clinics, medical, dental, optometry, veterinary, addresses it?
So do you, so give me guidance here.
Well, that's, that's-
We still-
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to put on the table here, so to speak, is, so let's talk about that then. Do this, do you feel we need, you want to be silent on the subject of clinics, or do we need this descriptor, if you will, that Item K is?
Well, we've been discussing directly all kinds of other establishments.
Mm-hmm. And that's why it strikes me as odd that the original zoning ordinance specifically said clinics, that it would suddenly be completely removed.
Yeah.
I have, you know, this goes back to our last meeting. We had a young woman, a lady in here talking about a home business, that she was doing a clinic. And so now it's a home occupation, and we have some items regarding parking for home occupation, but if she's using her home as a clinic, doesn't that tie back to this somehow, or is there a conflict? I don't know.
I think they're different. I mean, I really think they're tradition, I mean, that's going to be a different application, because she's not going to be doing the every 10 minutes. She doesn't have multiple people in there, she doesn't have multiple rooms, she has a room. And so just her square footage is going to dictate how that operation will proceed, as opposed to someone who has four or five exam rooms and a waiting area. So we can now, we can now sit there for long periods of time and read old magazines.
Well, to make it consistent, maybe we can, if we decide to adopt this parking requirement, we could probably put some language in there excluding home office clinics or something like that.
Well, that's, that'll be addressed in home occupations.
Yeah, I thought there was-
There is multiple comments on-
A limitation to two parking spaces.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we're giving it due consideration.
That's a good question.
So my question then on that is the verbiage, requiring a minimum of one parking space per 200 or 250 square feet of waiting areas and exam room. Which is it, 200 or 250? Am I not reading this properly?
It was left for-
It's left for us to make that determination? Okay, not a range.
Right.
Okay. So members, if you want to leave this in, then we would need to make sure you're comfortable with the square footage.
They can do it now.
Right.
Oh, that was just tossed out there as a talking point.
Right. So if you look at Item J above, it, "Office space" says the one parking space required per 200 square feet of gross floor area, not directly apples to apples, but I don't know if that would provide you any guidance in your thought process on this? All right, for lack of, for lack of movement on that, I'll put 200 on the table to keep it consistent with the one before.
It's fine with me.
Any objections?
No.
Anyone want to belabor it? In a good way, though. Okay. All right.
Which, when I'm reading this, I'm, sorry, we work at breakneck speed around here. Is there even a change? I think what we've run into problems, and we ran into this before, was the word "clinics in C" and "professional service establishments," and we got into a semantics argument with the contractor and the developer over whether a medical facility was a personal service establishment, or was it a clinic?
I would argue it's not. Personal services tends to be lawyers-
Lawyers and, yes.
Accountants, something like that. Not a clinic where, I mean, I think if you said "clinic," everybody would think you're going to the doctor.
Right.
If you said "personal services facility," I don't know what they might think. But I don't think of the doctor.
Perhaps we structure that more clearly to medical, dental, optometry, veterinary offices and clinics.
And just put that language there and leave the rest of it as is, because it's already at 200 for, but see, it doesn't get into the exam room and waiting area. It talks about retail sales service areas. It talks about retail sales service areas. And, and that was where it was, was where we got into a lot of, well, what, what part of, I mean, we, what if I have a whole area that's records or storage or, so I think that was what was driving this. I'm sorry, it's been a while. To separate it out as its own beast.
Right.
And, and maybe even use the similar language as in C, but separate it so that we don't have the conversation over retail sales service area. I mean, that's, that's more related to a general business than a retail, not a clinic.
Right, and that's what I thought we were doing between-
It's an odd couple to be together.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing between C and K, is that we're intentionally separating.
I think that's where we should go and, and then maybe go with the, the two hundred.
Right, two hundred.
Because then that fits almost identical, but we get rid of some of the language conflict.
Good?
See, that wasn't hard.
Let me just make sure everyone's been given the time to deliberate. Mr. Flynn has his fingers to his forehead like he's envisioning something. Is it a headache are you thinking? Okay. Are you, are you good with where we are then on this? Okay, all right. No, no problem, I'm getting close to the end now, I want to make sure that-
You're just so efficient and, and, you know, I'm not keeping up.
All right, we'll just keep moving.
Okay. Which shall we tackle first? Home occupation or short-term rental?
Home occupation.
All right.
Like to work through the definitions of this.
I think everybody was very comfortable with the beginning of it, the addition of what a home occupation was. And then I, I did my homework and cottage businesses, we cannot regulate them at all. The health inspector cannot regulate them, they are not to be regulated. It is in health and safety code. I sent it over to Mr. Schnell, he was like, oh, that's obscure, and I didn't know anything about it. But we've run into it because of farmers' markets. He did recommend that we remove it completely from this section and that we move it over to chapter twenty, which is health and something else, and it go in with the food licenses and then we tuck it in under the first section in there and we delete it from here.
I think you got ahead of me. What, what do you, which section are you referring to?
Um, we are in fifty dash four twenty-seven.
Okay, you're way ahead of me. Can I, can we go back to fifty dash one?
These are the definitions, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Those are the two for short-term rentals.
Okay, I'd like to ask for some clarification. I apologize if this was discussed at the last meeting. It's, it struck, the definition of occupancy for short-term residential use seems a little bit odd to me and I'm hoping just someone can help me understand this. Is residential use that does not include hosting or having parties or social gathering for non-events or for any events for which an admission or other charge is made?
I can explain it.
Please.
We've been having an ongoing problem. It, it has been resolved, but a property was being used for short-term rentals and it was essentially an event center. You want to have a bachelor party, fraternity party, bridal shower, a wedding. Your corporate wants to get together and everybody wants to drink a lot, whatever, and they were grossly disturbing the neighborhood. They finally tore up the house pretty bad.
Right.
And the actual owner found out about it and I think this is all going to come to a halt.
So I, I understand what that situation is, but I want to make sure that we're not writing a definition or code because we're being influenced by one situation versus writing a body of governance, if you will, here about how we zone our city.
It's exactly the pathway we went down last meeting, was exactly that question. Using a sledgehammer where you need a tack hammer. Right, because we don't need to change stuff just because of that one situation. Did you say it's been resolved now?
Well, that's one single incident and we shouldn't base the code on that.
Oh, I agree.
Well, we're digressing. The, the issue that Mr. Esbrand brought up initially was the wording, I believe, on, on, on the, the way it was worded. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's not get our heads out of-
Yeah, so, well, well, and I appreciate the spirited discussion that we're going to have and look forward to that. But, you know, again, not being here last time and looking at this, maybe it's looking from afar a little bit at it, it did strike me, so this means anything else goes because this is the only thing you've said does not go.
Almost.
So, so what if, it, it says, I mean, first of all, it's kind of awkwardly, awkwardly worded. Residential u-, it shall mean a residential use that does not, does not. So, I mean, you're going to a positive and you're going to a negative, so you've got to get whiplash there. But I get the gist of it, you're not allowed to have a party for non-residents. But it, it says for which an admission or other charge is made. So I could have a party or I could let somebody use it and not charge them and it would be perfectly okay.
No, the word or is in there. So it says hosting or having parties or social gatherings for non-residents or for any event for which an admission or other charge is made.
Which actually to me makes it feel even a little bit more squishy is because now you can't invite anyone who doesn't live here to come over to the house that you're renting because it's against our ordinance for you to have a social gathering.
That's correct.
I, again, I appreciate the intention. I know what we're trying to do in that one case and I understand what the intention here is about defining what residential occupancy is, but I'm not sure that I think this does it.
I think that's where the nuisance ordinance that I included in the packet that has been passed maybe gives you a little more comfort zone.
That's correct. I would, I would strike this sentence in total and rely on the nuisance ordinance. Whether you're renting a home for one night or you own your home or you're renting it for six months. That's why we have a nuisance ordinance now that has a lot more teeth in it.
Is, so these definitions were put into it, I guess in question to the nuisance code. Are these definitions necessary if the nuisance code is addressing it somehow else?
I think at some point you still have to have some description of what a short-term rental is.
Okay, so then in that case, can you provide us any insight, if not tonight, then at our next meeting, of what some other cities, how other cities would define this?
Yes, and I, we have several people who've done extensive research on this. Unfortunately, I'm not one of them. I can, I know that one of our council members has been very active in this and probably could provide us a tremendous amount of insight on it.
That, that would be terrific. I would, I would like to have a better understanding of how other comparable municipalities define this.
I will tell you, the lawsuits have begun. T M L sends out updates. I have not had a chance to read the last one. It was in the last one or the week before, we get them weekly. And I know that there's a lot of discussion about the, it's starting, the lawsuits are beginning. So we don't have any case law, well, I shouldn't say that. There is case law, but there's going to be a new plethora of outcomes.
Sure, and, and I appreciate that and I've, I've thought about this a lot and I don't want to deviate too much. But I think our job here is to write the best code that we possibly think we can write and to recommend it to council. I can't do that if I'm sitting here second guessing that I'm going to get sued about everything that we put in here. And this is all new territory. I'm sure there will be lots and lots of cities, perhaps even us, who will revise codes along the way. But I think we need to start from a good, you know, maybe simple position of what is the definition of occupancy for short, short-term residential. I, this says it's basically anything unless you want to have a social gathering and have people from outside come to it. And I just don't think that that is the best starting point on this. I would really urge us to look at what some others are doing to get a better sense of-
What I was going to recommend is, is based on the city of San Antonio that just passed their short-term rental ordinance, is that we should have the, the development services or the permitting office from the city of San Antonio come brief our board on what they went through because they've gone through over fourteen months to put theirs together and it's done fairly well. I don't agree with everything, but I think that we'd like to invite these two individuals or one of them to come tell us what they just went through. Because they've, they've done way more work than we'll ever do on this.
So in the interest of time, let me ask, is, I, this is of concern to me, but I want to know whether it is to you or are you satisfied with what this language is? Because we can move on, we'll all have a chance to make a final vote on what we recommend, but this is something I just don't, I didn't feel was-
I am not satisfied on either of them.
That it gave me clarity that I needed.
Last time we met, I think Mr. Schnall put it, put it out as such that we weren't going to do short-term rentals. I mean, that was-
That was the recommendation from the zoning review committee.
That, and so that's how it was presented.
Okay.
Uh, and I can see some value to that. Scott thinks it's too heavy-handed and I don't disagree with that either. I mean, I'm, I'm, I am not settled on my feelings on this. I can see both sides of the equation. I think having somebody from the city of San Antonio come in would be an excellent idea with the understanding that we're not San Antonio.
Right.
And we have to tailor it whatever they present-
Absolutely.
To what we have, to our community. So it may be also worthwhile to look at some of the other smaller communities.
Right, I would like to, I'd be interested in-
And if they've already done the work, I don't see any sense in reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, and I, and I know, you know, we have a complex decision to make, that up or down that we will ultimately take on short-term rentals. But I can't get there in my mind if I don't have a good definition from where we're beginning.
I agree with you and also, Joe, I'll tell you that what we don't know yet is the city of Austin's being sued right now. It's at the Third Court of Appeals. We will know by the end of this month what that answer is and if the answer is in favor of short-term rentals, then things press forward. If it's against, it will go to the Supreme Court and they will probably overturn it. So we need to think about that.
So we will come back to that and again, I don't mean to cut off that discussion. I know we're going to have that discussion, but I want to, I'm, I'm, I want, I want to get, I'm trying to deal with some nuts and bolts here first.
Well, definition-
What's the definition?
I agree, and it's anything less than thirty days.
Yeah, well, no, that's the, there's two different ones here.
Right.
Occupancy for short-term residential. I would, I would like to ask that we try to take a little bit more time to explore what inappropriate definition would be there if you, unless you feel that that's adequate now.
No, it's not adequate.
Do other members?
The occupancy for short-term residential is like trying to describe the color blue by saying the color blue is not brown, black or white, so.
That's correct.
So that didn't get us there.
Okay.
I agree with that.
So, so my ask then back to staff is if you could kindly help us in getting some clarification on this a little bit more.
Let me, let me ask you again, where did this sentence come from? That was from a commission that was put together?
No, that was done by Mr. Schnall. He put those together thinking this would be a, a, a safe way to incorporate it into the zoning code and, and give yourselves some parameters to work with. And obviously it's his-
The only parameter, though, I feel like that it's giving us is to make sure that we don't have another problem like the current problem we have, because that's the only thing it's addressing.
And that's what this, that was an outgrowth of.
Right, and that's, but I don't think that's good lawmaking.
Yeah, and I agree with Tom. I think, you know, this is, and you, this is telling us what it's not.
Right.
I think it'd be better to put it in more positive light telling it, telling us, we define what it is.
Well, and you have the opportunity right now to take some time and try to get it right because we do have the nuisance ordinance that can be utilized at this point. So we do have tools in the toolbox and maybe it is prudent to gather a little more information and maybe await some of these decisions. It, it's not like we're totally unprotected. We, there are multiple ones in the community already. We haven't had tremendous outcry, which is good. We've had a few, they've been addressed easily and the, the real problem children, we have tools to deal with now.
Yes, one of the things while we're seeking more information on how to define it and perhaps restrict it, I think there also needs to be some sort of clarification between the direction of the city and the police force on what does code enforcement and what constitutes a nuisance violation? Is it calling one night, one person calling?
No, the code's very clear, the, the new-
Well, I read it and to me, I, maybe I read too fast or was distracted, but I didn't understand.
Problem I have with a nuisance is there's no penalty unless the nuisances, I think, occur three times within sixty days or cumulatively seven times over a year.
Right.
That seems awful high standard to me. And, and, you know, it's, it's, we're dealing with hypotheticals here, but if it were me and I say I had to go to work in the morning, I had an important meeting and I got some party going on next door that's keeping me up, I don't think I should have to be subject to that. And yeah, I know there are nuisance ordinances, but why should I have to even be subject to that to have to call out for a nuisance ordinance?
I think that's a good point, Mike, but how do you gauge when a police officer, say, gets there and if it is that situation where it's really not that loud? You're not going to have a decibel meter, you're not going to have, so where's the line of reason?
I mean, and that's what we have to find. And, and, you know, you brought up the lawsuits and I don't think we can preclude this from happening because I think that would be construed as an illegal taking of property. You can't prevent totally people from using their property, but we can, you know, and, and there's that nuisance aspect. And also, you know, as it was, as I received the email, I was concerned that that particular event could have spun out of control really quickly. And our small police force, I don't think could have really handled it. Yeah, they could have probably got it back up from other police forces, but it could have gotten ugly real quick.
But you don't fix that with an ordinance, though.
Yeah, on the other hand, this is a source of much, could be a much, a source of much needed revenue for the city. So I don't think it should be dismissed out of hand either. So, I mean, yeah, there, there are a lot of subtleties in here that we need to really handle.
Actually, there's, there's no revenue to the city.
Well, I think there would be, there'd be taxes, there'd be permits. I mean, right now, there's no revenue to the city.
So, again, I appreciate what you're saying. We'll have a chance to debate that and you can go yea or nay however you want, but under the assumption that we are going to debate this, I still think there are some foundational things that we need to get on the table to help us then have that discussion. And I'm sorry if I'm being harping on it, but I'm really struggling with both of these definitions.
I can certainly go through, it's pretty easy to grab language from other places and not just here, but across the country and I'm sure we can find you fifteen definitions, at least give you some feelers of how others are dealing with it. And then as Mr. Gray said, it may be, you know, let's find out what the courts are doing. And I know one of our council members is very aware of quite a few of the court outcomes.
Maybe, maybe instead of bringing in another city, we could have you or the city manager put together a presentation of different types of options. Just a survey of what's been done by other cities. And then we could, that's a starting point. And then we could have somebody draft up, based on that presentation, those recommendations, we could have somebody draft up some text and then we can start hashing out the specifics.
That's something generally we, we do in many areas where you look at best practices. So that's something that we can look at and compare other cities of what they've done. I pulled up the city of San Antonio and so what they've done now is a permit process and there's an application and you have to go through a number of things. It gives the definitions of occupancy and those kind of things, so. And also the police department do go out and they read the decibel level and then that's when they issue a noise violation. But we can definitely put some type of presentation that has-
That's, that's not in our current nuisance ordinance, is it? With a decibel?
It's, it's covered under the nuisance ordinance for habitual.
Oh, I guess I missed that, okay.
It's also, it's also in our noise, uh, excuse me, sorry, Janet. It's also under our noise ordinance, but it, it does allow, again, gives more teeth for habitual short-term rentals in that case for municipal court as well.
Okay, so if, if everyone's comfortable with this, we put an asterisk or whatever by these two and we'll come back to revisit these so that we can continue to move on. But we'll come back to have this discussion then about actual definitions regardless of which way we-
Sure, I'll tell you, Joe- I'll tell you, Joe, I would on the second paragraph, if we just stopped at thirty days or less period, then I would accept that.
Yeah, that-
Well-
Well, let's, let's, again, we've, I think Mr. Asbrands has set out, laid out a process to go forward.
That's fine.
So let's see what, where the process takes us before we start, you know, hashing out. Yeah, I like that, or I don't.
I'll defer to Mr. Flynn on that, thanks. Okay. Thank you, let's, let's keep going then, so we're, we're through fifty dash one. Is there anything, okay, moving on into fifty dash four two seven?
I marked a couple of items, if you want me just to tell you what I marked.
Please.
On what is, was old item five now is item four. The home occupation shall be conducted entirely within the dwelling unit or properly permitted accessory building. I put a period there and deleted the second line that said, "No more than the maximum area of the dwelling unit or accessory building permitted by the Internal Revenue Code." I can tell you the IRS code has nothing to do with the city of Castle Hills.
Exactly, and Mr. Schnall had, his notation was to remove that.
I think that sentence could come out, and then they've already scratched the second sentence, oh, excuse me, the third sentence. So I think we just put a period after accessory building, and then go down to use of carports or yards for home occupation, home occupation is prohibited, so I think we can do that. That'd be my recommendation. And then-
We good?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, keep going.
And I also marked on number eight, maximum of two additional parking spaces. I think all we need to say there is, I, I just, I kept, put a capital on the parking, shall comply with the most recently adopted rules and ordinances, as opposed to trying to define something. And I don't know if we need that first sentence or not, I didn't think we did.
If you'll look, the next notation, very last one on the page, Mr. Schnall stated it should probably just read, "All city ordinances on stopping, standing, and parking apply," and take all the rest of it out.
Okay, I'm not sure, I'm like, give him pause note, but I think I agree with him. And that was all that I had marked.
I made a note that on item fifteen, just a difference in font size, I don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're not getting there yet. We'll clean that up, I promise. The signage, we do not, we, somehow it's not in here, so that on number three, it would, actually it would be, we'd have to add another one, it would be at the bottom. A home occupation shall not place or display a sign advertising the home occupation on the premise. That is universal with pretty much every ordinance I looked at.
Just so that we're keeping up, is everyone good with where we are, so we've gone through three different things here?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken, Mr. Flynn, Ms. Thalen's comments, we're all keeping up and good with that.
We're good.
Okay. That said, then, the one that caught my attention is now item twelve. The home occupation shall not involve school or childcare for more than four children, or adult care for more than two adults. And struck me that four children is an awful lot of children to have next door. Not that I don't love children, and I'm sure we would all want to go on record of expressing our love for children, but perhaps there's a neighbor who, next door, who doesn't anticipate having four children in the backyard playing? And does that home occupation mean four children period? Or four children who are there because they're being, the individual is being paid to care for those children? So there could actually be family children there, too.
I will need to check, there's, I believe that the state of Texas has a law that's probably going to supersede, that may have that four limitation in it already, that, that would trigger daycare and licensing and blah, 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 so.
So you're saying anything over four might trigger-
I don't, I'm not, no, the, the trigger number, but we need to check.
Possibly, and I guess I'm talking in the other, that's a good point, thank you for that. And I'm talking in the other direction, too, regardless of daycare, it's like, you know, think this, what this says is tomorrow, if this was in effect, you could wake up and your next-door neighbor has four children there who could be playing in the backyard, the front yard, whatever. It just seemed like a large number to me compared to some of these others that, you know, we, you can have two adults if you're doing adult daycare, you can have four if it's children. I feel like I'm a child here.
How do we arrive at four?
Right.
What's reasonable?
And it, and it sounds like perhaps because if that's the threshold, you would go up, too. But I don't think that's necessarily what we should, maybe it is what we should consider or accept, but I just wanted to put it out there, it does seem like a rather large number, because you don't know of other circumstances in that home.
Right.
Of other children in the home. What?
Well, definition of family is humongous. There's, and, and, there's, that's a sticky wicket. It might be one we just don't even want in there.
Maybe you could change it to paid childcare?
Well, but what if it's not paid still?
Well, I mean, when I was a kid, we'd have, I, my brother and I, it was two kids right there, and we'd get the neighborhood kids to have a football game.
You bet.
You know, does that count?
That's, I don't know. I mean, maybe not, but you're still there, and then you can have four children there who are, their parents are paying for them.
Is she providing care?
Well, it still goes back to the, the definition as we now have it that says home occupation means an activity carried out for gain.
Right.
If it's a freebie, I don't think it counts. Freebie, kids just coming over to play isn't covered. It has to be for gain, right? I mean, the way it's defined.
That's why I said, you know, paid childcare.
So the football players coming over probably is actually a net expense, not a gain, because we know what they're doing to you.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't think that, I don't think that's covered.
No, at least put out, put out one neighbor's window.
I don't think kids coming over from the neighborhood to play is covered by this ordinance, I don't think.
What, what's the intent of the statement? The intent is for someone not to have a home-based daycare-
Right.
-system, and, and by limiting it down to four maximum-
Right.
You know, and people are probably going to take advantage of it no matter what. So how do we make it so it's really disadvantageous for someone to do that? And that would be by lowering that number, possibly. You know, if you say it's two, or if you say it's three, I don't know.
And that's based on the assumption that we do believe it would be disadvantageous to allow your neighbor to have a home daycare operation basically going on there? I mean, if it's acceptable to everybody, perhaps it is. It just strikes me that-
I wouldn't want it.
Yeah, it's, it is a daycare operation to me, if there's four kids there.
Wait a minute, you're the one that's always complaining about preventing people from using their property, so you're-
This is a home-based business at this point.
Well, that, an Airbnb could be a home-based business, too. It's the same thing.
Apples are enormous.
You're making money, there's a nuisance.
All right.
Rewind the tape.
We, we do digress a little bit. Concerned, do we want to, are we good with it?
You know, what are the ramifications if we leave it the way it is? If we leave it the way it is, and people have four kids they're taking care of, if they become a nuisance, call the police. Because I think we're talking, a nuisance is the issue here, right? If, if there are four kids next door that are being taken care of by a person, and they are creating a problem for me as the homeowner next door, then what are my, what are the, the things I can do to take care of that? I'm going to call the city. And I'm going to say, "These kids are over here tearing up my fence," or "They're throwing rocks over the fence," or "They're..."
Or they're just being noisy, but the police officer shows up and goes, "I'm sorry, Mr. Gray, but this ordinance says she can have four, or he can have four."
But they still have to fall within the nuisance rule, don't they, with the nuisance ordinance?
I guess what, what will constitute nuisance, nuisance there is-
Great question.
-four kids playing in the backyard nuisance might be to some people.
Would be to my mom, yeah. Not to me necessarily.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, Joe. I'm not a good person in this area.
And maybe, maybe it's not that big a deal to anyone, and it's not that big a deal to me, again, I'm not hating on kids here, but it does seem like a lot of children to have in your home to be running a home business versus the person that is the seamstress, or seeing the single patient, or practicing law and having a client come there or something, or, you know. The largest number of people we're allowing in is two adults to receive care services, except in this case, we're allowing four.
I'm good with four.
Okay.
I'll also accept three. I'm good with four, I really am.
So leave it as is?
I'm, I'm good with that.
All right.
I just, I'm just one, one out of five people here, but-
All right.
I'm good with four.
All right. Okay.
I love children, too. Especially when they're not mine.
They're great with a little barbecue.
And not next door.
Okay, what next, James, on this one?
On number ten, Mr. Schnall recommended that we leave in the prohibition of funeral, taxidermy, tattoo parlor, pawn shop, restaurant club, animal kennels, and veterinary uses. And it would end up probably being a separate number sixteen.
I don't necessarily oppose that. I could have the four children playing in one house beside, I mean, the funeral parlor and the one next to me, but-
They're probably beginning tattoos next door.
Then I just move next to Mr. Aiken. But why are we limiting it to that, then? If we're going to start, do we need, are there other things that need to be in there?
I, that's, I mean, I thought the intention was noise, dust, vibration, traffic.
Or creepy.
Or-
Creepy. All of those are nothing I would want next door.
Well, I wouldn't want a massage, massage parlor next door either.
It'd be more convenient.
We already regulate those somewhere else in code.
I'm good with moving it to number sixteen, if that's what we wanted to do.
It's up to you guys, he just made the comment.
I don't care. I have no big, um-
Joe?
I do, I do want the children, though.
Any comments on that, leaving it in? You don't know why we're limiting it to just those things?
I, I, I'm fine with leaving it in. I just, I still want to know why we're leaving it in.
Funeral is traffic.
And for that matter, I'd like to know why we don't enforce the code on massage parlors, but that's a whole different thing. But I'm fine with leaving that in.
So the discussion is, we're going to, we bring those other, those items that were struck out, and we're going to unstrike them?
Well, he specifically cited those, and it may have just been his opinion at that moment.
Well, as far as the, you know, the home occupation shall not include medical or dental care, that was one of the things that the lady was talking about last time, last meeting. She is going to be doing, I guess, seeing patients in her home. And that's a medical, she was concerned about her-
She said she didn't inject or do any-
No.
-thing that would penetrate the body.
And, you know, medical waste are a separate issue.
Is medical waste addressed anywhere else in the code?
I'm pretty sure that there are-
Has to be hazardous.
Yeah, that would be, that would be-
TCQ regulations, and there's other regulations that they have to follow.
Yeah, there are federal regulations on that. But I would, if we're going to put anything back, I'd put maybe the medical care. Oh, they said, "But not limited to, shall not involve medical or dental care, including but nominally limited to clinic, hospital, nursing home, or laboratory." I mean, I can understand.
But wouldn't, wouldn't they have to, if they wanted to do that, wouldn't they have to come to the city anyway? To get a permit to do that type of, if they were doing a funeral home?
That one seems very far-fetched.
I'm sorry, Janet?
It seems far-fetched.
Yeah, all these are, all seem far-fetched, and it's-
I mean, if someone wanted to open up a funeral home in a home in Castle Hills, they would still have to come for other reasons, I would assume, to get a permit and a state tax permit and a city of Castle Hills permit, which could then be denied at that point.
And they'd have parking problems. I mean, that's your very first, they don't meet because of our parking issues. We have parking very clearly defined about stopping, standing.
Well, this is home occupations, too, right?
Right, and that's where we are.
Yeah.
So why would we, in home occupation, prohibit a tattoo artist from doing work in their home?
Good question.
Well-
I say that trying to speak for the young people.
I, I say that because, I mean, I would object to it simply because it, it comes down to the medical waste issue. They are penetrating, they have needles, there's blood.
But that's no different than someone who lives with a, and-
Oh, a diabetic, yeah.
-condition, and they have sharps, and they deal with their sharps.
No, I could buy that. I just learned something about tattooing today. From you, Ms. Baker, thank you.
I have none.
Thank you for sharing.
For the record.
Sharing is caring.
All right, okay, so the suggestion from Mr. Schnall was leaving in the prohibition on funeral, taxidermy, tattoo, pawn, restaurant, club, animal kennels, and veterinary use. Are we good?
I think so.
Taking them out?
Leaving them in.
Oh, he's saying leaving them in.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
As a prohibition.
Okay. I, yeah, some of like you say are far-fetched. I can't imagine somebody setting up a funeral home or a taxidermy service in their house.
I suspect it's because he's seen issues like this come in other cities.
Taxidermy is tremendous amount of odor and storage issues. And we would find it in a flash, because people would not tolerate it.
Yeah, same with funeral homes, because you're, you're a lot of chemicals.
And we would go back to, it violates noise, odor, parking, I mean-
So does that mean you think we don't need it?
I'm just tossing out comments.
Well, I would, why don't we go through each item? You know, I mean, we can, I don't have a problem with a beauty shop or a barber, barber shop running out of somebody's home. I can't imagine a pawn shop being worked out of somebody's home. I would have a problem, and I think it'd be very unlikely, that you'd have a funeral or taxidermy services, because there'd be a lot of waste that has to be generated, and there are odor issues, and there are chemical issues. So I would certainly strike out funeral or taxidermy services. I'd, I'd strike out laboratories, just for the chemical aspect. I don't think you're going to run a hospital out of a, of a, a home, or a nursing home out of a person's home. I mean, we could go to, through there and make, and do it item by item.
Makes me nervous, though, to start picking and choosing different vocations, because we don't like it, or we think it might.
Well, I, I understand that, but, I mean, there, if you have a good justification, like a laboratory, you know, there are going to be waste, I worked in a laboratory, there are going to be chemicals going down in the sewer, there are going to be waste, uh, there are going to be containerized waste, containerized waste in your, in your backyard.
Yeah.
You know? So I mean, I think there's some justification there. You know, you, you might get into a gray area, like with a tattoo parlor, you know?
Could we go back again, like we've done with the others, and ask what other cities are doing along these lines? How they, how they prohibit the businesses they don't want to come in, and how they allow the businesses they do?
The trend I was seeing was not singling out. They were just dealing with signage, parking hours. They dealt a lot with mechanics, can't do anything outside. Those were more the, the trends that I was seeing, it's the ones that I looked through.
But again, my question, Janet, is if, if I wanted all of a sudden open a mortuary in my house, there are some things I would have to do.
You're going to have some state regulations, and our health inspector would be involved as well.
Right. Now, I don't know if that counts as well for a tattoo parlor. I don't have no clue, I've never even been in one. They are licensed?
Yes, they are.
I think they are.
Do they?
And they do have to come to us to get a zoning letter. We run into this with cosmetic tattooing. We consider that to be, cosmetic tattooing is not considered to be our, like, regular tattooing. It, we consider it to be a spa-type treatment, and we've been allowing those in our G General Business District because they are not a tattoo parlor, which is what our code says. So we give them a letter that they have to turn into the state that says this, and it's limited to, and their CFO specifically says it is limited to cosmetic tattooing standard for a spa, or something like that. And so we, we have those, but G General Business- So we give them a letter that they have to turn into the state that says this, and it's limited to, and their CFO specifically says it is limited to cosmetic tattooing standard for a spa, or something like that, and so we, we have those, but G General Business prohibits a tattoo parlor.
So if, if Mr. Flynn decided to start doing tattoos in his house for friends for a fee, that would be against our code, our city code?
It would also be against state law.
Okay, well, I think that would cover it, wouldn't it, right there? Isn't that enough if to, you catch by exception, I guess?
And there are other issues that are related, like, as I read, you know, the home occupation should not create any significant increase in the use of any utilities, or generate trash, or refuse beyond the average of the residents of the neighborhood. You know, as far as a taxidermy or funeral service, taxidermy's gonna create more refuse than you're gonna find in a house.
Yeah, I would go back to seeing if we can compare to other small cities and see what they do. My guess is this has been dealt with in spades by other organizations like us.
Well, you know, maybe we just put them all back in like we initially started, and then hope we pick the, the issue up.
We could certainly do that.
On, on permit, you know, or, or, or other state or federal laws.
So, I, I think I'd be inclined to, um, go with Mr. Gray's suggestion here, is rather than putting them all back in, and sort of in and out, in and out, let's see what others do. And maybe that can help inform our opinion, maybe it won't, but it would be, I'd like to, I'd like to see that, and if they've, you know, 'cause some of these may be state regulated, some are not, to some, to some, to what degree are they? Um, I think it would just be helpful to have that, so if.
I agree.
Number, number fifteen does go in about, can't be in violation of any other local, state, federal law or regulation, so, I mean, we talk about that for grandfathering, so that would assume that carries forward as well, I mean, you, you're not going to be in violation, we're not going to allow you to operate if it's, you are mandated by some other regulation to have licensing, and, and they come out for site inspections, et cetera.
So that's our recommendation, is go get more information?
On, on that one, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm reading fifteen again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's just end of the, the section, so that's why the comment's tucked in there, it would actually be number sixteen if you, if you went with that, that's what we have more problem with than anything else. Those we deal with, uh, since I've been here, I know of at least two or three locations that we've had to deal with that issue.
From a nuisance perspective?
Yes.
And do we know, do we have other home-based businesses that we're aware of?
There are others that, but they declare themselves on their CFO, but we never, they never come back on our radar again, because they're not bothering anybody.
So again, we find out about them by exception through nuisance?
Correct, it's, it, the comment number seventeen, number seven, um, construction companies, maid services, other businesses involving employees come to the residence for daily supplies, work orders, or other business-related matters, may operate out of, uh, uh, home occupation. We get called on those because people are tired of seven cars lined up in front of the house every morning, and everybody traipsing in and traipsing out with all their materials and their work for the day, they came to pick up the concrete mixer, they've come to pick up their cleaning supplies, that, those are the ones, even I have set a stakeout on one of those, so we, we've dealt with those pretty heavily, and. No comment at this time.
I'm, I'm confused by what the intention of number fifteen is.
Number fifteen is to grandfather, that's, Mr. Schnall provided that language to ensure that anyone who is already in existence, and not causing any problems, and not violating any laws, even if we for some reason went back and did, started listing, they would not be required to close their business. So if we got into specifics of taxidermy, pawn shops, nail salons, whatever, as long as they're already in functioning, they're fine.
I guess it's sentence structure that's confusing me.
That's.
It's like we're declaring something illegal, non-conforming use, and then adding the proviso versus it has to be this and this to be deemed illegal, non-conforming.
That comes from law school.
So, huh?
That comes from law school.
That's, there's where half of our problems be, I'm just kidding. Okay. Other comments? We good here? Yep, yep. Um, one, two, three, that takes care of that, right? That section?
Yeah.
All right. It's eight fifteen.
Well, we have.
Just for clarification.
Sure.
Since we're coming back on a few things and getting more information, that, um, it will not be on the council meeting.
That's correct.
Till next week.
Yeah.
For additional clarification, your next zoning meeting falls in the week of the New Year's week?
It would actually be technically on the first.
So do you wanna jump to the following Monday, because city council meets on Tuesday, or do you wanna push to February?
I know, what are y'all doing on the first?
Relaxing.
Mike's doing tattoos.
Getting their.
What are those options again, I'm sorry?
It'd be.
Well, we could meet, you could meet on the first, which seems a little ludicrous, you could push to the following Monday, which I believe is the.
I'll tell you, it's, uh, the following Monday is going to be the seventh, Monday the seventh.
Seventh. Or just completely push zoning altogether to the first Tuesday of February. By Friday, I will know if you have a zoning case of any type, because that's the drop dead date for the January here, meeting, if we don't have anyone walk in the door, then we could easily push to February and, and get you through the holidays, I know that's not.
Unless I, unless you're saying because of the holidays and the requests that we're making tonight, that they may not be adequate time to prepare for the seventh, then I would be inclined to look at another date, but otherwise, I would encourage us to move for the seventh.
Lean for the seventh.
I agree, I think January seventh is good for me.
Yeah, but, but again, I think we're, we're sending back to y'all a couple things that you need to have time to put together.
Research time.
Yeah, so I.
January seventh works for me.
Yeah, me too.
January the seventh.
Okay, so, short-term rentals, so it's.
I'm just saying.
It's about eight twenty, I want us to be cognizant of time, and, um, I think what I'd like to do is.
Do we have any citizens that were to be heard?
We're, we're still in public hearing, so, I'm assuming, Mr. Booth, if you wanna be heard, you'll throw something at us, but you're more than welcome to come up at any time.
Thank you, George Booth, one twenty-four Dogwood, what concerns me about the ordinance for short-term rental is it allows people that have an empty house to rent their house on the Air and B B, Air and B and B program, or something similar. But that is discriminatory to somebody like me, that also has an outbuilding where I could rent a unit, not that I want to, but you're not allowing anybody to do that, and I don't think it's right, because, you know, if you're having a problem with somebody causing a disturbance, you'd be better off with somebody that owned it and lived there than you would with somebody that doesn't live there and rents it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Let me, let me open up the floor and see if anyone wants to put anything out there to begin this discussion, uh, your point of view, your concerns, your what more, or whatever, and then we'll just kind of take this a little bit at a time here to get it going. Ms. Baker?
You're talking about short-term.
Yes.
Residential rentals.
Yeah.
I'm very torn, um, I'm very much in favor of personal property rights, and that the government should stay out of your business, but I agree with, with Mr. Booth said, that he might have a grandmother cottage, and he's not allowed to rent it out. But then the lady down on Winston can build a cottage for her dad, who may be there every now and then, so, um, why are we restricting, and that's, that's not one of the issues we were tasked with, but I, I do think that it's an unfair application. And then I'm also concerned about the neighbors, and what is it, you know, what does it do, so, the nuisance ordinance is huge, and it makes, it makes it all acceptable to me, um, that we have it, I'm still a little concerned about what it, what the nuisance means, like, if I call one time, is that one nuisance violation if the police come? If another neighbor calls a second time, but it's the same property, same event, is it a second violation? How does that trip?
I will have to get with the author of that document and, and see, get clarification from, um, Mr. Henry. My past experience in law enforcement, if we had a second call, it was a second, I mean, that typically, we went once, said be quiet, second time, you gotta take it.
That's what I would like to see, and, and I think we need to have direction from the city manager and the, the council, that that's what they prefer that the police officers do. Their job is to protect the city, and, um, I don't think you should be able to just say it's all, all part of the same event.
One thing I would add to that, what I heard is that we're talking about non-owner occupied homes, and if you, if we create an ordinance that, that treats them one way, and the homeowners who do live in their homes another way, we are subject to litigation, without a question, and it's called inequitable treatment of homeowners. And lawsuits will be filed against that, we, we can't, 'cause it was a big part of our discussion last time on if you live in the home versus not living in the home and renting it, so I did a lot of research on this since, since then, and, and we can do that, but I guarantee we're, I believe we'll get sued, and then we're gonna lose when that happens. So I have many, many points on this whole subject, I, I guess I'd rather, I can go through those if you would like, my biggest concern is potential litigation against us and against the city of Castle Hills by limiting, uh, the rights of the homeowner, and I, I do appreciate what you're saying, like, I, I, I would never be a candidate for HomeAway, or VRBO, or something for my house, but there's too many compelling things happening right now in the court systems that's going to overturn, in my opinion, anything that we do that, that prohibits short-term rentals.
I'll add to that too, I, like Janet, I'm torn, and, you know, I, I understand your reasoning too, I'm, I'm, oh, about property rights too, on the other hand, we do, part of our purview is to restrict property rights, whether we like it or not, as, as it pertains to that other person. I think, in hearing Mr. Booth and seeing the email, I think there's a real risk to this, but I also underst- understand, yeah, we'll probably get sued, so what I would like to see, if there's gonna be, if we're gonna go down this route, I wanna make sure the homeowner that's renting their property has some skin in the game. Uh, there are penalties for violating the nuisance ordinance, is up to two thousand dollars per nuisance, if I recall correctly, but I'd also like to see some kind of permitting, so there's a, they have to put some money in the game, like, okay, I wanna rent out my house, I'm going to pay for a permit, and then there's also tax revenue, so that's a benefit to the city. So I think our, our role is to find that balance between property rights and the risk we have, we, we, that pertains to the citizens, and the benefit of additional revenue and avoiding lawsuit, and I think that's gonna be a, a tough nut to crack, but I think if we look at it from other cities' perspectives, or, or, as the city manager will put together a presentation, I think we can find that balance.
If I can clarify, when we talk about revenue generation based on permitting and things like that, the city of Castle Hills has no hotel motels in it, I believe. As such, we are not subject to a hot tax, which is ho- hotel occupation tax, as a city, so that means we would not generate revenue from a tax base like the city, like residents in San Antonio would.
We couldn't tax?
No, you cannot, but there is a state tax that has to be adhered to, but that money wouldn't go to Castle Hills, so, I'm not, I just wanna make sure you're clear on what the rule is, and, so where we could gen, the revenue we would generate would be on the permitting process. And so this is where I go back to, I've read, cover to cover, the city of San Antonio's short-term rental policy, and I've also talked now to two or three of the, the biggest platforms that there are, to their legal and governmental affairs departments, San Antonio got it right, from all of the perspectives of Airbnb, HomeAway, and VRBO. They don't love it, but they said San Antonio did it the right way, permit, three strikes, you're out, there's a process that you go through, and even up to delisting of the home, if they're violating, now, they can't be police, you're right, HomeAway's not gonna be a police officer, but they have, there are mechanisms in place. So as I read the, uh, the, the policy for the city of San Antonio, I think that should be our model with a lot of tailoring, or with some tailoring, 'cause they get into density and, and, and block density and concentration, if you live closer to a major thoroughfare, then you have a greater chance than those that live in the middle of the block. You know, that means people are gonna run, jump in line to, to raise their hand and say, me first, and that's the way it's gonna be in the city of San Antonio, they're gonna have up to X number of homes on a block, and if you're not in that line, if you don't get registered and permitted, then you don't get to do it, and that's inequitable to me, I, I think that's not fair, so there's, there's various other issues there. I come back to, and I know you don't like me saying this over and over, but we have a, a police station and police officers, I don't care if we think it's too big, I don't care if we think it, it's gonna turn into something ugly, that's their job, that's what they're paid for, is for civil unrest and laws being broken, and ordinances being broken. The way we will deal with that is through the police force, if we don't have enough police, then we've gotta deal with that.
Bring up a, a good issue there, uh, you bring up a good issue there, and we're, again, we're digressing, but our city council is very adamant about cutting costs and reducing.
Well, that's just not very smart, and I, that's another point I have for later on, that I wanna bring up at the end on another subject, I, I agree with you, Mike, but, but we know that's why we have police.
Sure.
Here, and it shouldn't be a reason to say, well, that house over there on Winston Lane could turn dirty and ugly, and we can't handle it, okay, well, that's not my problem, you know, that's the city's problem by not having adequate police protection.
Yeah, another thing, I, I'd like to know what kind of interest there is by our citizens, how many wanna do short-term rentals?
Well, I'll tell you, HomeAway, one of the larger ones in the nation, there are zero in Castle Hills.
Yeah.
Airbnb, there's just a few.
Yeah.
Well, that we know of, right?
Right.
That we know of, so what.
So it becomes a very minor issue theoretically.
From the platforms, it's a very minor issue, but they want to make sure, and again, from the litigation perspective, we're gonna know in twenty-nine days, how the Third Court of Appeals, what they say about this in Austin, and that will directly affect us, and Austin went from, just a few years ago, they had twelve hundred registered users, they are now at twelve thousand registered users, right, of these types of platforms, so it's not gonna get smaller, it's going to get bigger, and also, guess what? All due respect to the dearly departed Mr. Ray Ellison, we don't have Ray Ellison homes in Castle Hills, and secondarily, you're gonna find that, uh, in the research, statistically, this is not a millennial thing, we think it is, 'cause that's what we hear, your typical renter in an Airbnb or VRBO is a businessperson, or a mom, soccer mom, with, with a couple of kids. Statistically, and they have these stati, I don't have the numbers with me, but statistically, these are not issues, we treat it like it's an issue because of one house and one problem, so that's, that's yet another issue, the second issue is if we do require a permitting situation, which I'm in favor of, I told you just last time, if we have a permitting situation, you are registered with the city, you're not gonna pay hotel occupancy tax, you are gonna pay state tax, then the next piece of it comes to, and it doesn't matter if you're related, it doesn't matter if you're family, none of that matters. What matters is you're, you're affecting the approval of a transaction to use that home less than thirty days.
All right, let me.
Can I add one more thing, just?
Sure.
I would challenge you, because you're very, obviously, you've done a lot of homework, and you're very well informed on this subject, when the city manager gives his presi- When the city manager gives his presentation, I'd like to see you put together a presentation, because to address the citizens, um.
I'm delighted to do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
All right, Mr. Aiken, do you have comments on this matter?
Nothing specific. I think I, I think when we talked about it several months ago, uh, and that's probably been many months ago now, I just referenced, or mentioned a nephew and niece that I have in Austin, and they do their house through Airbnb during South by Southwest. They're just outside of downtown, not in like a Castle Hills area. They make $10,000 a year doing that. And this is a couple that, that's a lot of money to them. It's a lot of money to anybody, right? But it's a lot, a lot of money to them, they're a young couple, they've got three kids. And so, uh, I'm, I'm for it if we can figure out how to do it right.
During Hemisphere, the city council in Castle Hills changed the code specifically for Hemisphere and allowed short-term rental of homes during Hemisphere. I found it in the minutes one time when I was doing some research. Kinda interesting.
Progressive for you, such a young city, don't you think, back then?
One other question I would have is on the sit, on the situation we had on Winston Lane, I know very little about it. It was an Airbnb, I assume. Two of the platforms I spoke to said, had the city called them, they would immediately delist them in favor of the city, right? If it's an Airbnb platform, if the city calls and demonstrates that there have been violations, civil violations, they'll yank them off. So, I mean, right there alone, I don't know if we did that, I don't know if we called Airbnb. No?
Okay.
I'm unaware of us calling.
Okay. That's page one.
Let's, um, we'll, we'll, we'll come back around again, let me make sure that everyone's, you have any chance? Did you have anything else, Ms. Baker, at this point? Okay. All right, Mr. Gray, you may continue.
No, I'm just kinda kidding, kidding. A couple of questions I have for us to think about is, well, and this is for the city. What is the increased burden to the city as a result of having short-term rentals? What is the true increased, and I mean labor burden, to the city? Is there one?
I mean, as far as staffing levels?
I'm just saying in general, is, because we're treating like this, is like it's a major ordeal. So what is the true burden to the city because of short-term rentals, other than maybe police?
Police, code enforcement, and responding to potential violations. Um, if we were getting into the regulation of it, again, we would be going through the compounding situation of trying to, um, again, address the permits that we receive here, same as anything else from that standpoint. And, um, there are some staffing issues that need to be addressed, uh, from that standpoint. But, uh, again, that would be taken like any other permitting process, um, as, as we regulate anything else in the city.
Now, let's take that same question and apply it to regular homeowners in the city of Castle Hills that have nuisance violations for the exact same things, except the difference is they're homeowners. Does that create any undue or extra burden on the city of Castle Hills? And we already know that's a rhetorical question. The answer is no. Whether it's a short-term rental or whether it's a person already living in the home, it's the same thing, right? Uh, and, and Mike, you may have kind of addressed, is our police force inadequate to take care of these issues? I can't answer that. I don't know what our staffing levels are, I don't know if we're overstaffed, understaffed. I know what's currently happening with the city council. I think, well, I know little bits about it, and I'm not happy with what I hear. What, do you know something else, Mike?
No, not, or I told you. But you, you know, you're, you're also looking at things as they are now. And, you know, you said very, very few bed and breakfasts in Castle Hills now.
Probably gonna grow.
And, and yeah, so you have to project out what the problem may, may or may not be, you know, in the future.
Is it possible to limit the number of Airbnbs, whatever we call them, based on the ability of health and safety response for police and fire?
That's exactly what San, I mean, that's how I would interpret what San Antonio.
And I think if you set a permit fee, high and low, that's gonna limit people, too, like, eh, it's not worth it. Plus, they're, they're gonna, people, they're, they're not gonna wanna deal with the taxes, and, you know, that's gonna be, uh, a restraint, too, I would think, so.
So, I, I have a question that may be a dumb one, and, because I'm really good at those, is, it sounds like the assumption is made, at least for the point of this discussion, but is the assumption that there will be Airbnbs, there will be the short-term rentals?
I don't question that for one second.
Okay. Not based on this discussion, but I guess it's, what, what is the legal, um, issue that we would have if we prohibited short-term rentals?
You're gonna have big issues.
Okay, but, uh, you're, okay, that, okay, that doesn't answer the question for me.
I think.
But, let me, let me finish. And I guess what I'm trying to correlate this to is an understanding of, we prohibit hotels. Why do we prohibit hotels, but then we would say we would allow these? And I guess the, the, these, like, the, the short-term rentals. And I'm just wondering, when you look at all the legal challenges that are coming up, are there other cities that have an ordinance that prohibits hotels, that prohibits these short-term rentals? And have they encountered any type of similar, any type of legal issues?
Not that I'm aware, I don't know, Joe.
I mean.
It's a good question.
It's something I would be curious to know, because number one, I'd be curious to know, why did we prohibit hotels here? I think I know whenever that happened, probably well before my time, that, um, why? Yeah, why that took place? So, if we have that ordinance on the books, but then we're gonna kind of like change, ta- take the large electric sign down, carve it up, and do it on a smaller basis, isn't it like, it just seems like we're?
I think that's an outstanding question, Joe, because in the, the, the people that I've talked to on the phone clearly will know the answer to that. I didn't know to ask that. I, I think they'll know. Well, I, I don't think, I know they'll know. These are nationwide people that are dealing with this litigation, pending litigation all over the country right now. So I, that's a very good question.
I mean, I, you know, because it goes back, I think, Mr. Flynn, you asked the question, first of all, does the community want it? We're supposed to be representing the community, the health and wellbeing, underscore wellbeing, of the community. And granted, we all have different opinions on this, but there are other things that have been in place here, established law, if you will, that was put in place for a reason. And it seems like we're trying to fight against it now, because it's addressed differently, packaged differently, or whatever the case may be. And I would personally like to understand that, because that'll probably, you know, to some degree, influence how I would tend to vote on a recommendation on this, to know that. But that's what's different in everything that I've looked at, and I probably haven't done as much research as have you, as you have done, Mr. Gray. But that's one of the things that keeps coming up to me, is I see places that are running into legal problems, but they allow all these other forms of lodging to take place there, whereas we don't. So, is there some, no pun intended, shade of gray there versus some black and white?
No, I will certainly ask that question. Airbnb and shades of gray, that goes together pretty well.
I, I don't know that we prohibit a hotel. We just haven't, we don't have a zoning district that specifically allows it, and it would be one that would definitely require an SUP. So it's not a prohibition, it's just, like many other uses that come to town, it would require a special use permit.
Yeah, I think we all know that if Marriott had purchased the property, the Bank of San, San Antonio purchased, and they wanted to build up a Marriott there, that Marriott would be there and operating today. So, you know, I understand what you're, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't really think it's relevant, because I think we all probably know why we wrote that out of, whatever we did back whenever it was. I mean, I think we know what, what we thought was gonna happen. So I just don't think, I don't think it is relevant to the discussion, I really don't.
Well.
But I, I guarantee you, if Marriott wanted to go up on 14, it would be there.
Yeah.
There would be everyone here voting.
It would definitely be advantageous for economic development growth for us. I mean, from not only revenue, but to, to get the hot tax, um, to the city.
Right. And perhaps it's not relevant, I guess I ask the question, because I feel like what we're going through is, we're all so afraid of a lawsuit that we'll do anything to avoid it.
I'm not afraid of the lawsuit, I'm, I'm for Airbnb, I just wanna do it right. I, I don't care about the lawsuit, I'm not afraid of the lawsuit at all. I'm not, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say we don't wanna do it, because we know it's gonna be written into law. So I'm not, so I'm not afraid of the lawsuit.
Well, I, I won't speak for you.
Okay.
But there is certainly a lot of opinion expressed of fear of lawsuits as a result of this. And again, it just, it, it comes down to me of, you know, what is it that our community wants and is best for our community? And I don't know that I have clarity on that, and I'm trying to find threads elsewhere to understand where some of this is coming from.
Best for our community is limited government. Yeah, less regulation on the people. And I thought, I just heard you say, Tom, you're in favor of Airbnb.
Absolutely.
That's why you're not scared of a lawsuit. I agree with you.
Right. No, I, I don't, I don't think it's a law, this isn't a lawsuit is, issue, I don't think. And I, I don't, and Joe, I appreciate where you're coming from, from the motel, but I don't, I don't like, I think that's a totally different issue. So I don't think there's any relevance to what we're talking about, but it's just a matter of, do we think we should have it or not? Uh, or allow it, and?
I'm saying, I don't, I don't want us to be shortsighted, I just wanna make sure we're aware of everything that is happening around us, not to us, yet, but it, 'cause it's coming. We also have to think of a couple of things we haven't mentioned, is, is not just anyone can put their house on Airbnb or any of these other things, and not just anyone can rent from these organizations. You have to be of a legal age, they have contracts, they have terms and conditions that they put in there. And they state very specifically in these terms and conditions, must abide by local city ordinances and, and guidelines and rules like that. Again, they're not the police, but they certainly already have it in a contract. So in my opinion, from a legal perspective, that gives us the right to do things, to say, you, not only did you break our law, but you violated the terms of the platform that you're using.
So I guess, and that begs the question to me, if there are municipalities comparable in size to us somewhat, of what kind of issues or enforcement actions they have had to take, compared or balanced against what you're saying, Mr. Gray, of what the requirements of these companies are in using them as the platform?
Sure.
I think would be interesting to know as well. I mean, I, I believe that what I'm hearing tonight is that we do not believe that we are informed enough to bring something forward on this yet.
I think, I think if you could pull together a presentation, that'd be, uh, you know, more formal presentation, that'd be wonderful, because you.
I'm happy to do that.
Lot more about it than we do, for sure.
And I think that in, like you said, 28, 29 days, there'll be some sort of resolution from the legal perspective, whether or not it's gonna go on to appeal, whether it's resolved. So, having that time and then being able to work within what is established law would probably be beneficial to wait anyway.
I'm happy to do that, I'll do that for the next time as well. One, one other issue I'll add to this is, let's just say we move far and we, we make a provision so it can be done, modeled on something like the city of San Antonio. My bigger concern are the violators, the ones that don't permit, right? Because, again, the platforms are not gonna regulate that at all, that's gonna be up to us to figure that out, so, I'm sorry, Mike.
Well, no, that's all right. Um, I mean, in addition to city manager and you giving presentations, I think it'd be worthwhile to have the city attorney give a presentation on what the state of law is and, uh, what the potential downsides are for what, if we do one action, take one a, action over another. I think that would also be more useful information that we should have.
Is Mr. Schnell our attorney? He is? Okay.
So, based on these discussions, I, I wanna bring up, um, the meeting date again, because, you know, we have.
January 7th?
Yeah, we have like two weeks left before we go into two plus, slightly more than two. Is there enough time? Does everyone feel there's enough time to prepare or do what additional research we're asking for or presentations to be put together? And I'm looking particularly at Mr. Gray and Mr. Appley in this case.
Obviously, if we, the more time we have, the better of a presentation we can provide, uh, we being separately. You do yours, I'll do mine.
I think the worst thing that we could do here is to rush this.
I agree.
I would think with the holidays coming up, and it's minds more depend on talking to people outside of San Antonio, and gathering information. I think with the people, with the city of San Antonio, with, uh, you know, the folks that are responsible for what they've done, if you have, do you, have you, have you met these people yet? The, the development services people and the permitting folks? Because there's two people in particular that I can introduce you to, that, that you'd wanna talk to. I could send that to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know actually a couple people.
Mike Shannon, do you know Michael Shannon?
Yes, I, I spent seven years in the city manager's office there and.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes, uh, from 2004 to 2011.
Oh, so you know all these, a lot of these people.
And there's some colleagues of mine that used to work in that office that are now in development services now.
Okay. I was told Michael Shannon and Ms. Ramirez in the permitting office with city of San Antonio. And again, they got glowing remarks from these legal folks external to the city, saying this is, if you're gonna do it, do it this way.
And given that we've got all these presentations we're lining up and, and wanting to have the city, and in line of the holidays, I think Mr. Esbrand is right, we wanna, we don't wanna rush this, we wanna get it right.
February, then?
I think we oughta move it to February.
That's fine.
That's what I'd be inclined to do, because particularly with city staff, they just, not that your time, Mr. Gray, is all copious and free. I'm not getting paid for this, but in particular with everything else that's going on. And, I mean, this is gonna be really tough and complex. And we, you know, I know that we, the one thing we all share is the, the strong belief that whatever we recommend to council is really well-thought-through, takes in a lot of input, all the, you know, understanding and knowledge that we can bring to it. So, um, with that said, then, that would, that would move us to February 6th. No, I'm sorry, I, I, the 5th, February 5th.
Is that what he said? Tuesday, February 5th?
Right. Okay. So, if we have any other items that would come before the commission unrelated to this, that, those perhaps would warrant a January 7th meeting? If not, then our next meeting would be Tuesday, February 5th. I know there's a lot of knowledge, a lot of knowledge sharing, but, you know, please be sure to pass it through city staff, not amongst ourselves, so that, uh, we stay within the confines of law and also aggregate it in the best way possible.
How can we generate more interest from the people that live in the city of Castle Hills to show up and, and, and state their opinions? This is important.
Yeah, and, and my personal belief is that once people know about this, they're going to show up. Because I think the opinions from the public are gonna be just as strong as some of the opinions up here. I think by nature of what we do, when we do it, and the way it's, it's framed right now, it's not bubbling up. When we, and remember when we started this process a long time ago? We said that when we finished our work, before we sent it to council, we wanted to have a public hearing, too, before our final vote, to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to communicate.
So if on February 7th, we're able to articulate some various positions, would you expect that at that meeting, we would come to a conclusion?
No.
Or that we would then have something for a public meeting?
It would be my expectation that if we came to a consensus, that we would then put together the entire proposed ordinance. You would all then receive that and hopefully the public would have access to it over the course of the next 30 days to review it. We would then come back at our next meeting, have a final discussion of that, take any additional public input, and then we would vote on it.
So we'd have a special meeting for community input, separate of?
I don't know that I'd call it special, it could be regularly scheduled, but the intention would be.
Maybe a potential day, maybe March, that we could make it a goal?
Well, we can, we can make a, certainly we can make them a goal, you know, it's, but again, I think we have to be, I think we've been ambitious before that we were moving fast, and then we saw that it took longer. So I, I think we need to, again, kind of adhere to the rule of, let's do, you know, our best work and we'll take it one at a time, but let's not let it languish any longer than it has.
I'll shoot for 7th February for an outstanding presentation that will.
I mean, I mean, I really think the, the important thing is, one, this is, we're talking about the whole ordinance here. And I think the public has the right to weigh in on that, both here, before we vote on it. And then they have the right to do that, of course, in the public hearing, that would be associated with the city council meeting, so.
So, keeping with your schedule, we would look to get an outline, a draft text to the city council around April.
Um, if we were optimistic that we finish this up at the February. If we were optimistic that we finish this up at the February meeting, then I think we would want another meeting to make sure that we have solicited the, the public input and take a final vote, and then it would be off to council. Um, I'm not inclined at this point to propose a special meeting, but rather to do it in the 30-day increment, because I think once we say, this is the document we're probably going to vote on, it needs to be public facing for those 30 days, that we should make every effort possible to give people a chance to read it. So this may not move as fast as we would like it to, but yeah, it sounds like we're talking March, April.
We have been doing the meetings so that you meet on Tuesday, and then the following Tuesday, the city council hears them. That will not happen in this case, because we have to give the 15-days advance notice for publication. So we, we did publish for next, the 11th, in the event this had wrapped up, so we have been putting it in the, it's been in the newspaper at least twice, if not three times, so we have been inviting the public to come here and to come additionally to the city council meetings. But we will do that again, but it, just be aware that it's not going to fall the following week.
No, I completely understand that, and that's-
And that's perfect.
And it's, that's not meant as a criticism.
No, no, I think it's a good opportunity.
We're meeting our legal obligation to put it in the newspaper, no one's reading it in the newspaper. I think it's important for this city, all of us, to have a megaphone to help make people aware of it too.
Mr. Booth, how did you discover that this meeting was going to be on?
From the previous meeting I attended.
Okay. But you didn't read anything?
Well, I also-
City website?
City website, found it under agendas.
Okay.
And saw that listed, but I just knew it was here for, I missed last meeting, but I was here to meet before, we'll discuss the dates and put it on my calendar.
We can also make it on the newsflash on the first page, uh, that can go there as the document complete for review for public input.
And when do, uh, with what frequency does this come out?
Um, it will come out again January, then again March. So we could have a blurb in there with a link, uh, so that they can get back to it either in multiple ways, and we'll do the same on the, on the city Facebook, on the, I mean, on this newsflash. Well, heck, we can put it on Facebook if you want, so.
I mean, i, in, in Nextdoor, and if a, the mayor or council members want to address it, they have a platform here to do it. But that's, that's part of the importance of this too, is I think we would be remiss if we take all this input, all this research, and then don't listen to the public on any of it.
I will probably also offer a drawing for a free Airbnb at, at Joe's house. That'll probably get a bunch of people.
I have a special place for you. It's not in my house, though. All right, let me do a couple, uh, order of business here, it's 8:53 PM, we're going to close the public hearing at this point unless Mr. Booth has anything else he'd like to say. Thank you, sir, for being here, appreciate that. Our next meeting, barring a January 7th meeting for other, uh, action by the commission, will be on Tuesday, February 5th, where we'll resume discussion of this. Look for the presentations on the short-term rentals, as well as the additional information that we requested from staff tonight. Anything else?
I have one question. Um, I noticed that from time to time, we hear a lot about we have staffing issues that are preventing minutes and things like that from occurring, and, uh, in our role for all that we're paid, I, I wonder, we do have paid city staff to help us, and also, all, being sincere, what's the problem? Is it because of staff we don't have that we need? Is this an action that occurred because in the past it wasn't an issue?
Um, I would have to say at this point, this, it's not on the agenda for discussion.
Okay.
We can put it on the future-
It's not really a zoning commishy, committee issue, other than support to the zoning committee by the city staff. So where would we address that?
Why don't you feel free, Mr. Gray, to have that conversation individually, but outside the, um, the actual meeting taking place now, where it's driven by an agenda.
Okay.